All right, we're on air. Welcome to the Xenia City Council. Before we start our call to order, I'd like everybody to stand and let's have a moment of prayer together if we could, so please rise. After that, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Scrivens. Let's go ahead and pray. Father, thank you for tonight. God, thank you for the privilege of being here and serving in our community. And as we prayed before the meeting started, God help us to lean on wisdom tonight and not our own personal preferences. God help us to be quick to listen and slow to speak and do the best for the folks in our city. Thank you for our police folks and our firefighters that are out tonight on the streets. And we have no idea what kind of situations they're going to be running into. We thank you for their willingness to dive into people's lives and hurts and situations. And God give them wisdom. Many times it's a split-second decision as to what to be doing, both for the physical care folks and other situations. And God just pray for their safety and bring them home safe tonight as well. Praise things in Jesus' name. Amen. Chief, face the flag, please.
Recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let me go ahead and call our meeting to order at this time. And let's go ahead and start with the roll call, if we could.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Here.
Councilman Dean? Mayor Mays? President Ursula?
Here, and I would like to get a motion for the excusal of the mayor. She has a family business tonight. And for Councilman Dean, he's got a work-related emergency tonight. So do I have a motion for their excusal?
I'll move that, make that motion.
Sure. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, great. All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Scrivens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, great. For those of you that are with us tonight, you may notice that we've got some orange and black gear going on, so we're celebrating the victory last week over Buffalo and the anticipated victory this Sunday in the championship game as well, too. So thank you for bearing with us as we do that for council tonight. All right, we have the special meeting on the January 7th that the council had an off-site, and the minutes on those. Do I have a motion for that for approval?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, he's got it.
Councilman Dean, seconds, thank you. Any comments from anyone on those before we go for approval? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. And then we have a second set of meetings from our last regular meeting on January 12th. Do I have a motion for approval for that?
Seven.
Second?
I'll second. Oh, second, I got it.
Vice President, second? All right. That's right, that's true. Any comments before we vote on that from the council? No comments, so let's go ahead and call the vote, please.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. We have no special presentations tonight. The next opportunity we have is that we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone in the audience would like to come and address the council, feel free to come to the lectern here or the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to talk to us. We will not be responding or interacting with you for our council procedures, but we may have an opportunity to comment on that at the end of the evening during our council comments. And we always intend to have discussions with folks about their comments afterwards, too. So does anyone from the audience want to come and address the council at this time? Great. Mayor, would you like, did you come to address the council tonight or just to participate?
Just to listen.
Great, that's fine, thank you, sure. Great, okay, so we have no comments at this time. There is no old business for this evening, so we'll move on into the new business. First item on new business is Ordinance 2023-01, which is an emergency ordinance providing for the appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia, Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency for the 2023 annual appropriation ordinance. And Mr. City Manager, you want to give us some information on this before we vote on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. As required by statutory provisions in ORC 5705 and by our city charter in Section 9.05A, the city must adopt an annual appropriation ordinance, and we are required to do so by April 1st. In December, council approved a temporary appropriations ordinance to provide for services while our year-end closeout could be completed, which has since been done. Staff presents this evening with Ordinance 2023-01, the Appropriations Action for 2023. The ordinance would set all spending authorizations for all departments and services and various capital projects for this fiscal year. Council has previously engaged in discussions concerning this budget through meetings of our Budget and Finance Committee, through approval of the tax budget, through the five-year capital planning and final budget review and development processes. This is obviously an iterative process, so the numbers from the first version we've seen to this last version have certainly changed. The spending plan as presented would continue all services provided in 2022 and would add additional capacity in some targeted priority areas, specifically including areas like law enforcement. While the spending plan is comprehensive, it is also quite conservative, and there remains a distinct possibility that staff will seek supplemental appropriations for various actions or issues over the remaining months of this year. But again, this is the vast majority of the spending plan for all services for 2023. The appropriations, excuse me, the appropriations as presented in the ordinance this evening total 92,187,946 dollars and 85 cents. The spending plan as presented includes positive ending balances for all funds. Staff projects a key operating fund ending balance of approximately $4,592,000 and change. This projected reserve would meet our requirement for reserve balances established in the city's financial management policies and goals. We remind the public that the budget total presented is not the anticipated actual cash outlay that we will experience. Due to requirements that we have through generally accepted accounting principles, a lot of the funds, transfers and so forth that we have, in essence, double count. So we're not actually going to spend anywhere near $92 million this year, but we have to reflect all of those different transfers and so forth in the budget plan that we approve. So again, we are presenting this as an emergency this evening so that we might get this implemented at the earliest possible date, so we are seeking council's approval of Ordinance 2023-01 this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to approve?
In the absence of Mayor Pat Felton, motion to approve, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, that, great. Any comments or discussion from council members?
Council President, I would just like to commend the city manager's office plus the finance department and all the department leads on all the time and energy that they put out on just requesting the bids and doing all their homework and figuring out what everything's going to cost. And, you know, it's not an easy to do to put one of these together, so appreciate everybody's hard work and effort in that.
Great, thank you, thank you. And I'll second that as well, too. Ryan and his staff are always right for any kind of questions that we are bringing to them. And Ryan, you did a really thorough job of responding to that. And Brent, commend your staff, too, in terms of the budget, you know, preparation. It's, like you said, this starts early on in the previous year, and we go through multiple iterations and those types of things. And Jared and the rest of the crew that's been working on that has done just a tremendous job as well, too.
And just a reminder, in fact, with the charter this year, our procedures will be a little different. The finance department will take a little bit more aggressive role in some of that pre, you know, pre-council development process. So I appreciate the work that Jared has done with our department heads this past year, and we'll see a little bit of a transition this year, so.
Right, great. Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. The next one is an introduction ordinance, Ordinance 2023-02, approving the sale and the conveyance of the city-owned property at 130 East Church Street, which is just below an acre of land there to Dr. Paul Sol. And the city manager, would you please give us some background on this?
Yes, sir, thank you. At city council's direction, the city-owned property at that location, 130 East Church Street, known as the former senior center, was listed for sale late last fall. The site includes a 10,400-square-foot building on a .9537-acre lot. As recently discussed with council, the city has received a qualifying offer for purchase of the facility. The offer was $350,000 for purchase of the building and property, as indicated by Dr. Paul Sol. His expressed intended use is to open a dental office at that location. Staff believes this is an excellent reuse of the facility, and certainly we have additional needs for these services in our community, so it's a good fit. This evening, staff is recommending city council accept the offer and initiate the sale process through the introduction of the Ordinance 2023-02 this evening. And so again, that'd just be an introduction. That introduction will allow us to meet the timeframes established in the offer.
Great, great. Do I have someone who will introduce this?
You're the property manager.
Yes.
I'll introduce.
Great, that'd be great, thanks, thanks so much, Cody, appreciate that. Any questions at this time? We're not, obviously not voting tonight, but any questions for city manager on this?
Just, Mr. President?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Just want to compliment staff, again, and the property management committee. This property's been hanging around for a while, and we finally got a good match for it, and we're looking forward to seeing that thrive again in that area.
Great. Yeah, and just, once again, I commend the staff. We've, you know, it's intent of council that we disperse with properties that are not in direct utilization for city business. And you guys did a great job getting that out there and keeping us informed. Just for the audience to know, we did an executive session on this at our last council meeting, so we had a lot of background information on that as well, too, to prepare us for this. So thank you so much for that. All right, next item, Resolution 2023-02, authorizing the execution of a contract with American Structure Point Incorporated for the engineering design of the infrastructure within and around Xenia Town Square. City manager?
Thank you again, sir. Elements are coming together for the comprehensive redevelopment of Xenia Town Square site. As we've advised council, you should expect multiple recommended action steps starting in February. In advance of this, this evening, staff is presenting a recommendation to approve a contract for comprehensive engineering services, including design of infrastructure within and around the Town Square site. This is a significant step necessary in preparing the actual site for construction, as determinations for needed infrastructure locations and the improvements themselves are required in order for us to take what was originally submitted as a concept plan and finalize the actual development plan. For these services, the city solicited and on November 1st received two responses to a request for qualifications to complete this design of the necessary infrastructure improvements at the site. After an internal review of the two submittals, the selection committee determined that American Structure Point Incorporated was the most qualified firm to furnish the necessary engineering design services for the project. Structure Point has successfully completed a number of projects in our community. You'll note Shawnee Park Improvements, the James T. Henry Senior Circle, and even recently, I think last year, the South Columbus Bridge Replacement Project were all projects that they had design services provided for. Structure Point and subconsultants also demonstrated for us prior work in other locations, particularly in central Ohio, very similar redevelopment projects where they were doing comprehensive engineering, so we felt that they were well-suited for this line of work. As part of the review and negotiation process, the selection committee met with Structure Point team to develop an acceptable and realistic scope of services. Copy of that scope of services is included in your agenda report. That includes timelines, the cost for these subtasks and so forth. In order to complete all of the subtasks listed and their respective costs as presented, the contractual services amount totals $967,345. The 2023 annual appropriations ordinance previously addressed by council this evening includes funds to cover these expenses, and we would then establish a not-to-exceed threshold of that amount with American Structure Point. So these costs should be recoverable as we move forward with the Town Square project through TIFs, to the extent that those would be established and approved by our partners. So we look forward to the opportunity to recover these expenses in whole or at least in part. Having said all that, staff's recommending that we move forward with redevelopment, engineering for the redevelopment. We're asking for authority with this Resolution 2023-02 to execute that contract and start on that work right away.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second, great. Any discussion or questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, sir. Calling your attention to page five, at the study of the intersections, and I see we want to convert Church Street from a curve intersection, which is, to me, one of the flavors of the city of Xenia to a T-intersection. At that point, when we're talking about a full build, I think that's an overbuild. And when it comes down to that point of the plan, when we get down to fine-tuning the plan, I'd be firmly opposed to changing Curve Street into a T situation as opposed to the curve that's there. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. President, if I may? Yes, just some reaction to that. Again, this is preliminary engineering. A lot of these things will be conceptual, there'll be a lot of vetting of the concepts that are presented initially, looking at safety, practicality, cost and so forth. One of the things that we've discussed with council as part of this project is the desire to introduce higher-scale, higher lease and, both leasing and for-sale, townhome products and to create a much more robust residential environment along Church Street. And so based on market standards and expectations, we anticipate that if you're making a sizable investment in that type of property, that you are expecting not to live on a thoroughfare. And so for that reason, and also because there is some acreage that we can recapture by reconfiguring that roadway, we are maintaining a triangular portion of property there by Mechanic Street and Church that serves no purpose right now. And our estimate is that we have the ability to have some financial gain and add to the critical mass of what could be developed in that corner by reconfiguration of Church Street. Part of the concern also is Church Street's 25 miles per hour. You'd be hard-pressed at any given time to find cars actually traveling 25 miles per hour down that road.
Well, that's a strange thing.
We do believe that there is some traffic calming that's necessary, because we anticipate that this development's going to dryfoot traffic. That's a huge part of the point. And we want to extend that residential feel from the historic neighborhoods to the north of the site into the Town Square property, and in doing so, looking at reconfiguration of some of the intersections and roadway there to calm the traffic so we don't have those pedestrian safety concerns. But again, those are points that we can debate as we get through this process, and there's a lot of work between now and then to do.
Right. So, well, in terms of this work that we're approving here, these are studies. This isn't necessarily an approval of a specific grid layout or those types of things, but I think that'll give us the information that we need.
Yeah, it'll be an iterative process, so there are 30, 60, 90, and then full complete. And this is everything from initial study all the way through design drawings. So if we get to a 30% or a 60%, and based on cost, based on political factors, whatever it might be, that some of these changes or improvements we feel we need to veer away from, we have the ability to make those alterations as we move through the process.
Other comments or question?
Just one final consideration, says removal of the southbound right turn slip lane at Detroit Street and Church Street. Is that in front of the Huntington Bank? Are you going to?
Yeah, I don't think, I think that was an early part of the design conversation. There'll be a right turn lane there, it'll probably be reduced, not eliminated. One of the big concerns we have is that semi-traffic is using that Church Street corridor as an easy way around, rather than staying on the marked routes. Our desire is, again, from a safety standpoint, is to reduce the number of trucks that are heading down there. Now, that necessarily means that they're heading to the intersection of Detroit and Maine, and there will likely be some improvements there to ensure that we've got turning radius and so forth that's appropriate for that, you know, that expanded amount of truck traffic. But again, the, you know, the intent here is to make changes that are accommodating the types of development, the quality of development, the quality of inhabitants, residentially speaking and so forth, that really enhances that whole Town Square property.
There's not much engineering you can do when you've got a state route.
Well, right, but again, a lot of that traffic that should stay on the state route is trying to save 30 seconds by going around. And, you know, in the past, the city kind of facilitated that. We, you know, a roadway was created there to facilitate that. We think in order to see the types of investment and redevelopment, the type of residential housing that you would want in that corridor, semi-traffic going by is not going to be conducive to sales of that type of property.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other comments or questions? I'll say that this is all going to be novel for us. To some extent, we're parking back to the pre-tornado days, putting the street grid back in, encouraging folks to have pedestrian traffic back to downtown, having events and opportunities that will draw folks from all around the area to actually want to come in there.
Back to the future.
Right. So, once again, commend you guys in getting going with the design team on this, and we all need to be participating as we go, as well as with the public as well, too, because we get one shot at this, at revitalization of our downtown, and this is just a critical step for them, so.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, I know the public is hungry to understand what the heck is happening and where are we going from here. And I think it's important to reiterate, to your point, Mr. President, we got one shot, we're trying to get it right, we want something that's far better than anything we've had in the past. And from engineering to market studies to financial analysis to looking at how you fund public infrastructure, development partnership agreements, third and fourth-party participant, I mean, it's an extraordinarily complex process for a site that will now be on its third generation of redevelopment. And again, we have been very busy, as council well knows, this past year, with a lot of tentacles of work in a lot of different directions, and we are now approaching that phase over the next month or two, we can start to talk about physical improvements and things that we would begin seeing, begin seeing happening in 2023 and beyond. So we ask folks to stick with us a little bit longer. Don't join the riffraff in the, you know, in some of the stuff that's out there, there's plan. We're trying to do what we can to improve our downtown and our local economy, and just stick with us a little longer.
Great, thank you. All right, let's call the vote.
Did we?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you have to be in this?
We had a motion.
We had a motion and a second, yes. Yeah, yeah.
May I clarify that Vice President Smith seconded that?
Yeah, it was motion by Councilwoman Dean, and I seconded.
Okay, all right, we ready? Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
We're off and run.
All right, next item is a Resolution 2023-03, authorizing the purchase of a self-contained breathing apparatus and related equipment for the fire and EMS divisions from Atlantic Emergency Solutions through the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. A critical component of fire service safety gear is the self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. The SCBA's currently in use by the Xenia Fire and EMS Division have reached end of life, and in a planning for replacement of that equipment, our fire and EMS division leadership has been very assertive in pursuing grant resources to help offset what is a pretty high purchase cost for this critical equipment. To this end, the city was notified late last year that we are being awarded a federal FIRE Act grant totaling approximately $330,000 to replace both the SCBA's as well as the compressor system that we use to fill those tanks. The new tanks and compressor system will be higher-rated, it'll allow us to have a greater PSI, and that allows us, then, tanks that have a longer duration, so that's a safety factor for our staff that we appreciate having the opportunity to provide. For the grant, the city's local match will total approximately $110,000, rounding these numbers, for both the air packs and the compressor cascade system. The specific action item seeking to authorize the purchase of the SBAs is this item now. A subsequent item after this will address the compressor system. The preferred SCBA's recommended for purchase are available from Atlantic Emergency Solutions. Purchase from this vendor can be made and comply with competitive bidding requirements if completed through the Houston-Gallison Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, this is known as HGAC Buy. This is under contract number E08-19. The SCBA's have been competitively bid through this cooperative purchasing program, and as a result, pursuant to Section 9.08B of the city's charter, we can utilize that competitive bidding process, and we do not have to be redundant in bidding this out separately. So staff is requesting council approval of Resolution 2023-003 to authorize the purchase of these SCBA's from Atlantic Emergency Solutions through the competitive program in the amount of $352,782.96. And I just want to add that our fire division leadership, the chiefs and staff have been, they've been working at this for several years, and I appreciate their efforts. This is a significant financial, you know, grant that's reducing our local burden for equipment that we had to buy this year. This equipment will be no longer serviceable after this year. So it's great timing, and I just appreciate their efforts and wanted to keep their staff safe.
Great, great. Do I have a motion?
Seven.
Second?
A second.
Great. Council comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. President?
Yes.
What's the useful life of the proposed equipment?
I would ask Deputy Chief Bogan, actually Acting Chief Bogan right now, to come up, and he can give you some background on the specifics.
The life of the cylinders are 15 years, so the life of the SCBA are good as long as they pass annual testing.
Now, if the current, what we have, what are we going to do with it now it becomes surplus?
We will try to sell it through gov deals.
Through surplus? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Do we conduct that testing ourselves, or do we have?
No, we have an outside agency conduct that testing.
Testing, great, thank you. Any other questions? Council, thank you.
I just commenting, doing the math there, we're getting about $6 to every dollar we're spending, and that's a phenomenal grant. And, you know, so people understand, when we do have grant money, there are attachments to it. So to apply for this grant, we had to come up with our own matching funds, so. And it is an investment of $100,000, but the life of our team is very valuable, and I'm glad you guys were able to secure this, so thank you very much.
Thirty-four.
Right.
Thank you, chief.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Ursula?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the companion resolution, Resolution 2023-04, authorizing the purchase of a Bauer compressor cascade system for the fire and EMS division from Breathing Air Systems through the NPP gov cooperative purchasing program. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. As indicated in conjunction with the previous item, staff's recommending approval of this resolution. This would authorize the purchase of the compressor cascade system for the fire and EMS division from Breathing Air Systems in the amount of $83,572.40. If approved, this purchase would be completed through the National Purchasing Partners gov Cooperative Procurement Organization, NPP gov. This is a recognized competitive procurement system, and the compressor cascade system desired by the division is a listed item therewith. So again, pursuant to Section 9.08B 3 of the city's charter, separate competitive bidding is not required, because that competitive bidding process has already been done through the system. So staff's requesting approval of the resolution to authorize the purchase and put this grant money to good use.
Do I have a motion? Councilman, Councilwoman Dean, a second? Councilman Scrivens, thank you. Questions or comments from the, uh, from the council? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
Senator Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is a procedural motion to go over the council board commission committee assignments for twenty twenty-three. Uh, the first set are those that, uh, will be the, uh, committee assignments for the, for the council, and, uh, per our, our, um, council procedures and our charter, uh, I, I am the one that appoints these members, uh, so, from a global perspective, we are maintaining the, uh, committee structures as they stood in twenty twenty-two with the, uh, committee chairs and members, but I will go over those right now. So, I'm going to announce the following appointments for the standing committees for council for twenty twenty-three. The Economic Development Advisory Committee, uh, the chair of that will be myself, uh, council president. The mayor, uh, Sarah Mays will be on that, and then also the vice president, uh, Wes Smith will be on that as the committee members, and the alternate for that will be Councilman Thomas Scrivens. Secondly, the Finance and Budget Committee, the chair of that will be the vice president, uh, Wes Smith. I will be on that committee as well, Will Urschul, and then Councilman Dean, uh, Levi Dean will also be on, on that committee. Uh, the alternate will be Councilwoman Rebecca Dean. Third will be the Legislative Review and Government Affairs Committee, that will be chaired by the mayor, Sarah Mays. Uh, members of that committee will be Councilman Thomas Scrivens and then Councilwoman Rebecca Dean. Uh, the alternate for that will be the vice president, uh, Wes Smith. The Property Management Committee, I will be chairing that, uh, Will Urschul. Councilman Dean will be, Levi Dean will be on that committee, and then Councilman Cody Brannum will be on that committee, and the alternate for that committee will be Councilman Thomas Scrivens. The Public Safety Committee will be chaired by Councilman Thomas Scrivens. Uh, I will be on that committee, uh, Will Urschul, and then also Councilwoman Rebecca Dean will be on that committee. The alternate for that committee will be Councilman Cody Brannum. And then finally, the Public Service Utilities Committee, I will be chairing that, Will Urschul. Councilman Thomas Scrivens will be on that committee, and Councilman Cody Brannum will be on that committee, and then the alternate for that committee will be the vice president, Wesley Smith. Also, at the, uh, meeting of each year, we, uh, recommend, uh, approval for various boards and commission assignments, uh, with the recent amendment to the ZD, Xenia City Code, chair appointments are now for, uh, two-year appointments, so, twenty twenty-three, this will be the second year of the two-year appointments as follows, and these will not need to be voted on, these are the, these are the incumbents. Uh, Board of Zoning Appeals will be Councilman Cody Brannum. Planning and Zoning Commission Chair will be Vice President Wesley Smith, and then the Xenia Recreations and Events Commission Chair will be Mayor, Mayor Sarah Mays. Uh, we have three other items that do require a motion and a vote, and so I respectfully request appointments as follows. For the Green County Career Centers Health Science Academy Advisory, Advisory Board, I nominate Councilman Thomas Scrivens. Do I have a motion for that? So, Councilman Scrivens?
I moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Great, any comments from the rest of the council?
How often does that meet?
Uh, quarterly, quarterly, we met in the last year because of the code.
Okay, right. Okay. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second will be the JED One Board of Directors, uh, and I would like to respectfully appoint, uh, our finance director, Ryan Duke, for four-year appointment to serve as the, uh, city's representative on that board. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from the council?
You're good with that, Ryan?
Yeah.
Who's the law?
Yes, sir. Good, thank you. Do I, uh, do I, uh, let's go ahead and call the vote then.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we need an alternate for that, or does he assign someone?
Ryan, how's that work?
Yeah, there's not necessarily an alternate, uh, the bylaws of the JED essentially have, uh, the city just appointing one person, and then there, um, there's one person appointed by the schools to represent the schools, one person by the township. Uh, the, uh, school where, um, where the JED is located, the CUPSA, one of the employees of that district is supposed to be appointed, and then the group appoints one final member as the president of the JED, so, uh, there's not really anything in the, uh, code that appoints an alternate. Uh, if there's a quorum of three, then they can meet, if there's not, then they can't, and, um, there are some term limitations. Um, I think, uh, there's some ambiguity about, um, when some of the terms started, and I've only been, this is going to be, I've been on the board for five years, uh, essentially, some others serve even a little longer, but we're trying to clean up some of that, and we may come back and ask for a different appointment next year. Um, I would probably request that Jason Lake be appointed. Um, there are some, uh, there are some financial reporting requirements, so I also serve as that board's treasurer, and I would be a little uncomfortable, um, given our responsibility to report on those things with our finance department not having some responsibility in that treasurer role, so, um, yeah, I think that is something we'll have to consider moving forward, is who would fill a term if, um, if I'm not eligible, and I would recommend that would probably be, uh, our assistant finance director at that point, but.
Got it. Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then the last item is the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, uh, the mayor's been serving on that already, so I'd like to respectfully, uh, request her appointment, or reappointment to that, uh, to the Planning Commission, with myself as the alternate for her if she's not able to attend. Do I have a motion for that?
Second.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions from the council? Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Scrivens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Uh.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. We have one, uh, last remaining resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-oh-five, withdrawing the city's objections to the renewal permit number seven six seven zero two four zero held by Saffron Six LLC, permit number nine eight zero four three one six held by Xenia Gas and Snack Incorporated, and permit number five four two four one six five held by Maloraja Inc. Food Mark by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control. Madam Law Director?
Uh, if council remembers, we did this quite a while ago, uh, back in April of last year, we did resolutions, um, for objections on all three of the renewal of the liquor permits of those three establishments. The reason we had asked council, uh, to object, and the reason council did object, was we had criminal charges pending, uh, on all three permit premises for the sale of drug paraphernalia. Um, there were convictions in all three of those cases, in two, uh, the cases it were clerks that worked at those permit premises, in one case it was the owner. Our PD, uh, did an operation in the fall, they did find at those three permit premises that the drug paraphernalia had been removed. So, after talking to the city manager, uh, who's also our public safety director, and the police chief, the goal here always was not to put these three businesses out of business, the goal was to make sure that they were being good corporate citizens and not selling drug paraphernalia that's harmful to our community. Um, we have reached agreements with all three, all three agreements have been signed. On those agreements, they have agreed that they will not sell or display for sale drug paraphernalia, and that they will remove all drug paraphernalia from their establishment, uh, within seven days. Based on that agreement, we also put in the agreement if they would violate any terms of that, the violation of that agreement itself gives us a rate to renew our objection to their permit. So, based on the fact that all three businesses were willing to work with us, um, the detectives in our police division will be keeping an eye on this, but because of that, we are recommending at this time that council withdraw our objections, and, and we'll see how they do under the agreements.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from council? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Scrivens, second by Councilwoman Dean. Uh, just like to say thank you, uh, for our, our police chief and your, your crew, and for our law department for working together on this, and, uh, uh, just encourage that we need to stay vigilant on this, and, uh, we need to be known as a community where this is not.
Not here.
Not, not here, right, right. Just way too much harm on that part, but we do want to encourage businesses to be productive, members of the community as well, too, so thank you, Madam Law Director, for keeping up with that, with us as well. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannum?
Aye.
President Urschul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Now it's time for the official report. So, Madam Law Director, you have anything else for us tonight?
I have nothing else for you, Mr. President.
Any questions for our law director?
Go Bengals.
Go Bengals.
Here we go.
All right. Mr. Finance Director?
Yeah, I would just, uh, say that I did send out, uh, uh, my monthly financial report last week, it did a recap of the two thousand twenty-two year. Um, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that, I, uh, highly recommend you at least read through the narrative on the first couple of pages that gives you a quick synopsis of, of where we're at. Um, generally, two thousand twenty-two was a pretty decent year, uh, especially from a revenue standpoint, we're seeing the revenue growth that we would hope to see, um, but like everyone, um, inflationary factors have really hurt us from a, an expense standpoint, and, um, and so there's, there's definitely a lot to, um, to monitor here in two thousand twenty-three to see how those expenses and revenues are trending. Um, as Mr. Mayorman stated earlier, we're projecting, uh, that we meet a reserve requirement at the end of the year, but as you start to look out into some of the out years, the, the projections certainly look, um, uh, a little more problematic, so, I would encourage you to take a look at that report, if you have any questions about it, uh, let me know, uh, but I think it gives a, a pretty good overview of, of where we're at at the moment. That's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. City Manager?
Nothing further, sir.
Any questions for the city manager or the finance director? Let's go with, uh, at this time we'll have, uh, comments from the city council. So, Councilman, Councilwoman Dean?
Nothing done tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Cody?
Yeah, um, I, we, BZA met on Monday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, we had, uh, three cases, um, I feel like I haven't read these in a while. Um, our previous meeting was, uh, June of twenty twenty-two, so, so that just means that our code is actually doing its job, and we haven't had any variance requests, which is good.
Right.
Um, BZA twenty twenty-three dash year one, it was a variance to allow construction of a four hundred and twenty square foot addition to an existing seven hundred and twenty square foot garage. Um, they, the property also contained a hundred and forty-four square foot shed, so it, uh, basically, um, was a variance basically because the maximum accessory structure was over the allotted seven hundred and twenty square foot, um, that case was denied, um, but they did allow variance basically for that individual to keep their shed. Um, case BZA twenty twenty-three dash year two, it was a variance to allow construction of a fifteen-foot tall free-standing sign in excess of the maximum eight-foot height permitted by the Land Development Code filed by Tom, Tom Armstrong with Onning and Sign Contractors for the property located at one oh four Hospitality Drive. Um, that was approved, and that's going to be the future site of Buffalo Wild Wings. Um, and then we had case BZA twenty twenty-three, it was a variance to allow an accessory shed that was, um, built without a permit to remain on the property prior to construction of a single-family home, which requires a variance from the Land Development Code, um, and that requirement, basically the code requires that an accessory building must be built after the principal used the home is constructed, and that was prior, uh, followed by James Crawford for the, um, property, and it was approved, um, so he's got until, they, they set a date basically of March twenty twenty-four, I can't remember the exact date, um, that his house has to be constructed or the shed will have to be moved. Yeah, overall, it was a good, good time seeing the, uh, BZA members, um, appreciate city staff being there all evening, and, uh, that's all I have to add.
Great, thank you, Cody, thank you so much. Councilman Scrivens?
Thanks, Mr. President, just two items. Uh, the, uh, Public Service Committee hasn't met since last year, and I'm sure we'll be meeting within the next month.
That's right.
There's a number of things that, uh, need to be discussed. Uh, we want to thank our, uh, law director and the mayor and the Legislative Review Committee, we're ahead of the state, I see the state is trying to pare down some of the Ohio Administrative Code, we're well on our way of paring down the Xenia codified ordinances, and we've been just taking the chunk and reviewing it and burning it back here for passage, so, we're in front of the state on this deal. Uh, just want to thank everyone for maintaining their composure during the last round of bad weather, if we just stay a course, we're, we're gonna be all right, we're gonna be all right, and I'm just excited to see all of the construction and the road construction that's ahead for our city. We'll be a city of orange barrels here very shortly, and that'll be a good sign, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Great. Mr. Vice President?
All right, thank you very much, uh, for those that are watching, um, thank you for, um, your attendance. We have, uh, a change in planning and zoning, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission voted last November and December to move the planning and zoning meetings to now Wednesday, it will be the Wednesday prior to the first council meeting every month, so, in most cases, that is the second Wednesday of every month, but there are a few times where it does fall on the first Wednesday, um, so, um, next planning and zoning meeting is February eighth, and that's a six o'clock meeting, so, um, and I believe there is an agenda already for that meeting, so, just to let people know, that used to be on a Thursday, so that did get changed, and, uh, and, uh, go Bengals, hoo day.
Hoo day.
What's Bengals?
Mr. President, if I, if I, just, uh, our, our most ravenous Bengal fan is our vice president, and he made the trip to Buffalo last week in the snow, so going to Buffalo, Minneapolis, or Denver in January, my man, God bless you, so, as a Steeler fan, we're behind our AFC Bengals.
There you go.
Go Bengals.
Yeah, and you didn't hear that from the mayor about the Bengals fans as well, too.
That's right, AFC North, let's go.
Good. Uh, the mayor's not able to be here with us tonight, but I would like to, uh, uh, just commend her on a number of items that she went to represent us as a city, uh, on Monday of January sixteenth, she gave a welcome at the Martin Luther King Junior Community Celebration Service, let's say, just a, an amazing service, uh, that's hosted by our Xenia Area Association of Churches and the, uh, African-American Ministerial Alliance each year, down at, uh, the First Evangelical Lutheran Church with Pastor Bill Schrockau hosted that there at his church, and so, uh, glad to have a choir there, the Community Choir as well, and, uh, just a, a great time for all of us to reflect on God's mercies in our lives, so, yeah. On Tuesday, January seventeenth, uh, she and the city manager had an opportunity to meet with the Kettering Health Network, uh, leadership on some items with the city. On Wednesday, the eighteenth, uh, she was able to participate in the board meeting with the Clark State Foundation, um, and the Xenia Campus of Clark State, uh, hosted that, that out at the Reach Center, and then on Friday, the twentieth, uh, she had an opportunity to meet with a, a community resident that had some concerns about the city, and, and just had a good opportunity to solicit and, and, uh, have a good discussion about individuals. So, once again, um, we encourage anyone that has any questions or concerns, uh, you typically have two, two resources, you got Facebook, or you actually can call us up and say, I'd like to get together with you.
To the face.
At the coffee hut, or Tim Hortons, or wherever else you'd like to go. All of our phone numbers are listed on the city website, and, uh, we actually will respond to those, and, uh, if you give me a call, I'll actually buy that cup of coffee for you as well, too, we'd much rather interact with you in person, we're not threatening, and, uh, it's much better to be able to talk one-on-one on those types of discussions versus trying to respond through, uh, through social media, so please, please take advantage of that, and I will tell you, knowing the other council members, that if, if you give them a call, and the mayor, they will respond to you, and they will meet with you, and, uh, there is a lot of city council that's not necessarily the case, but this one it is, so please take advantage of that. And then the last item was on Monday, uh, January twenty-third, she participated in the area mayor's lunch in Fairborn, so, uh, I'd like to commend Sarah in that, uh, I think she gets an extra, I don't know, twenty bucks a month than most of us, and she gets an extra twenty meetings a month in, in addition to that, and, uh, Sarah takes her And, uh, Sarah takes her role, uh, as our mayor very seriously and, uh, she does a tremendous job, uh, getting out in the community at the county level, at the other municipality level with our partner organizations and, and serving with us on that. And, uh, I'd also like to say, I just want to commend, uh, Wes as well for his time as our council president. Uh, once again.
Well done.
There are a lot of, there's a lot of work for the council president that, uh, I'm just finding this out, thank you. Uh, that goes on behind the scenes and, uh, uh, things ran extremely smoothly for us, Wes, where there weren't times that we were caught off guard or didn't know what was happening or understand the procedures and, uh, that doesn't just happen by chance. Uh, so, uh, our, our city clerk, Michelle, uh, keeps us all in line and keeps us in order. Our law director makes sure we're staying legal within the boundaries of what we need to be doing and our finance director makes sure that we're only appropriating money and spending it as we should. And our, our city manager with all of his staff, uh, is, is, as we put out the vision for the city, uh, they're out implementing that vision. But, uh, I just want to say Wes has just done a tremendous job, uh, leadership there for us and, uh, uh, there are a lot of folks that, that are the, the, keep the system running smoothly and, and you're one of them, Wes, so thank you so much for that, yeah. Uh, in terms of my comments, I had an opportunity to attend, uh, the, a couple of meetings with the, uh, Xenia City Schools. They had a regular meeting and emergency session. But what I'd like to mention there is Carolyn Huber, who is their, uh, treasurer, uh, will be stepping down. Nothing untoward, uh, she just has an opportunity to get a job a little closer to home. And, uh, I, I, uh, two folks that keeps, uh, keeps us running is Ryan Duke here within the city and Carolyn Huber over at, uh, the Xenia Community Schools. Both of you, I found, could, uh, were patient and able to answer any questions, uh, regarding the finances, both in the school district and, and our city here as well. And I just want to publicly commend Carolyn, the, uh, if there's any Byzantine funding mechanism known in mankind, it's how we, we fund our community schools. And, uh, she understands every step of that process. I actually tried to map it out. It was like a fifth order polynomial and I gave up at one point, uh, but she, she got it. So, uh, she'll be sorely missed from our community, uh, but, uh, she's left a great legacy with her staff over there with the community schools and, uh, and they, they are currently in a search process.